At this time, we will reconvene the budget workshop. And item tonight is general fund. So Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you will take a look, the way, just kind of give you a layout of how we're going to run tonight, your table of contents, we're going to start on the left side and run essentially through the table of contents tonight. Anita is going to start out with revenue side and talk about that, and then we'll pick up under general government, human services, and community services. Now, the difference there is we're going to skip social services because they're at, they've got a conference going on, so they're not here, so we'll bring them in on the next night. And then on the next night, we'll have education, public safety, and social services. And one other thing tonight, elections, they are fairly close on the expenditure side upfront, so if Kelly's not here, they had a 5:00 board meeting today, so she's coming, if you have any questions. But if she's not here by the time we get to elections, we'll just move on, if that's all right, and we'll pick it up when she gets here. And just real quick, for those of you who have not met, I think most everybody has, Brad Hufford, who is our new economic development director, just want to introduce him, he's here tonight, just kind of listen and learn on the budget side, so. So I'm going to let Anita start off on the revenue side, you've got the revenue packet folded up in your book where she can get the details on the revenue side.
Okay, also, I'll be toggling back and forth between that sheet that Brian was referring to, it's on the legal size paper, that's on the inside pocket of your book. I'll be toggling between that detail and then on page 19 in your budget book, if you'll turn there, that's where you'll find the general fund summary information for revenues, and we'll be going back and forth on those two papers. So starting off, of course, we'll start off with our biggest revenue, and that is, of course, property taxes. So for next year, we are estimating a net taxable value, including motor vehicles, of a little over $6.2 billion. And if we apply a 62.5 cent tax rate and a 98.22% collection rate to that number, then that produces a current-year levy of almost $38.3 million. And if you look at the bottom table on page 19, you'll see that we've recommended for the current-year property taxes, a revenue amount of $38,291,000. And then for prior-year collections, we're estimating $409,000, that's slightly less than what we've collected in the past. And the reason we lowered that for both the prior-year levy and the penalties and interest is because, you know, our collection rate, it continues to improve year after year. And as the current-year collections improve, obviously, you're not going to be collecting as much on your prior-year levies and then on your penalties and interest. So all in all, there are total property taxes that we're budgeting for revenue is the $38,937,630. We'll flip over to the next page. We'll move on to sales and other taxes, and we've talked to exhaustion almost about sales tax. I give a presentation pretty much every month, and an update on what our sales tax distributions have been. And for us, this is really a challenging number to peg moving forward because it is so strongly tied to the economy, and just not knowing, you know, what's going to happen. And as I said at our May meeting, you know, we're starting to hear talks of a possible recession maybe coming along down the road. And you might remember, I showed you that, that chart where I went back 13 years to the Great Recession and showed you how the last recession impacted our sales tax. So not knowing what to do, we relied heavily on some information, guidance, and resources that we had coming from the North Carolina League of Municipalities and the Association of County Commissioners, and they're recommending that we use a 3.75 growth factor for sales tax. So we backed that down slightly, just because we've seen, I believe this year, we're trending at an 18% growth, and that's after 14% growth last year from the previous year. So we settled on 3% is the number we put in there as a growth factor for sales tax for next year. And remember the different articles of sales tax, we've got the Article 39, that is funding that is earmarked entirely for the general fund operations. But we do have that Article 40 and 42 sales tax that we're required to give a certain amount to the schools for their capital needs. We're required to give 30% of the Article 40 distribution and 60% of Article 42 for the, to the schools. And you'll remember, I mentioned at our last meeting that I knew we were getting really close on that calculation when I looked at the audit last year, and it's really a combination, again, of our sales tax just really being through the roof, plus the savings on the debt refinancings that we did. So between the two of those coupled together, we did increase the allocation for capital to the schools. So when we get to the schools, you'll see that there's an increase in the recommended amount of capital to the schools based on that statutory calculation. Just want to mention that, you know, when I look back historically, we always have paid the schools much more in capital than the actual calculation required. So we actually fund the schools based on their need. We don't fund them based on this calculation, we simply do this calculation to make sure we're giving them the minimum requirement, if that makes sense. Okay, next, we have intergovernmental revenues at the bottom of page 20, and this is just what it says, these are revenues from federal and state agencies, they're restricted predominantly for DSS and health operations. There's a little bit of funding in there, of course, for the lottery funds that are restricted for the schools. And then also, the district taxes for EMS that come from Washington Township, Bath Township, and then also the towns where the county provides EMS, which is Belle Haven, Bath, and Pantego. That's where we account for that funding from the district tax, it comes back to the general fund to offset, to help offset the cost for running our EMS operations. And then at the page 21, these are the license fees and other miscellaneous general fund revenues. You can see them listed there historically, they're consistently about $2.5 million a year. That actual 2021 number you see there at $13.6 million, don't let that throw you off, that is where we had to do the accounting for the refunding proceeds on the bond refunding, and also the other big change there, the health fees related to COVID. So once you subtract those out and kind of normalize that $13.6 million, that brings you down to about the $2.5 million number, which is where we'd expect that to be. And mostly, you know, these are made up of just miscellaneous funds that are charged to users to help offset the program costs of whatever's being utilized there. And then on page 22, we have investment earnings, I'm estimating those to be at about $50,000 with the recent increase by the feds of the rate of 50 basis points, this number might go up slightly. But we've been getting very poor returns, as you can imagine, on our investments and our idle cash, and it's a great time to, still a great time to borrow, but not such a great time to have fund balance sitting in an account earning any interest. And then I'll, I'll put you back over to page 19 to talk about the last two revenues, they're at the very top, the bottom two categories at the top, the administrative charges from other funds, the 366-576, those are charges from the water fund and solid waste fund back to the general fund for mostly personnel that, you know, do work on behalf of those funds. So in other words, HR, finance, you know, we pay the water fund deals, we pay the solid waste deals, we pay their employees. So we charge those funds back, a little bit of our salary and benefit money to reimburse the general fund. And then finally, below that, appropriated fund balance, Brian spoke about this Monday night in his budget message, we've appropriated $1.6 million of fund balance to be used for two new programs. The first one is to set aside funding for workers' comp reserve, which you voted on, I believe, at your April meeting, and then also a million dollars for the Beaufort Promise to provide for scholarships for, four years hopefully of scholarships for Beaufort County residents at the community college. So I really didn't refer much to the detail, but you can see every line item on the legal size piece of paper, that's every line item, it's several pages, all these numbers on these pages roll up to what I just reviewed, and I'll give you a moment to review it all, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those for you.
Anita, when you, when you look at the sales tax, is that the gross amount before we distribute the money to the schools?
Yes, it is gross.
Okay, thanks. John?
Anita, just offhand, what did we earn, or what do you think we're going to earn this year in, in, from investment earnings? We had budgeted $75,000.
I think we'll be lucky to hit 50.
Okay.
Move on.
So I'm going to take you back to page 13 to catch up before we get into expenditure side. On page 13, you will see the summary of authorized full-time positions, this is presented each year to the board. You will see that there are, there are no recommended additional positions in this budget, they're the same number, the same number of FTEs that you had from this year, 21, 22. We also give you four years backwards to see what the changes were over the years, and we've tried to highlight in there, you'll see the asterisks to make sure you, you can understand, if someone reads it to see why position was added somewhere, kind of when it was, you'll see like about chore workers, where we moved those out when the folks retire as a chore worker, and we moved that over to contract services. Like in 21, 22, the board added a full-time person to the health department. So we try to show that historically so you can see. So that's the summary of authorized positions, starting on page 15, you'll see the salary plan for '22, '23.
I have a couple of questions about that.
Sure.
Is this being filmed, being streamed? Okay, well, number one, going to the planner, there are three people listed in planning, where do they work and who supervises them?
So in planning, that is the inspections group, you know, we had planning and inspections combined.
Yeah.
So there is a, there is a front person who handles comments and answers the phone and does those things, and then there is the chief inspector and the other inspector.
Yeah, well, I probably misnamed that, it ought to be inspections slash planning, rather than just planning, because that's...
It's always, we can certainly change that, it's always been kind of listed together as inspections and planning, and when we pulled out the planning piece and moved that over to the colleague, it kind of stayed that way, but that is inspections.
Okay, so then the other part is the sheriff's department, there, there are no summary totals within the sheriff's department, it's sort of mishmash, not summarized. I, I went through and I added up, 2017, '18, there were 97 people in the sheriff's department, and that sheriff's department includes the jail, the bailiffs, and the emergency call-in, 911. So, okay, you've got 97, the next year in, in '18, you've got 107, then in '18, '20, we've got 107, and now we're back to 102. Is that...
Say it one more time.
We're back to 102.
We, we're actually at 94. In FYI, '21, '22, we're at 94, remember you reduced positions when they moved over, when, when the contract took over for the school system, the SROs, those, those came out.
Oh.
So then the board started allocating the positions in total to the sheriff's office, total FTEs. So the total number of FTEs for the sheriff's office, including all of those, is 94 this current year, and then we're recommending again 94 in the proposed budget.
So we went from 102, okay, that's less 12, plus 5, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really increasing the number of people in the, in the sheriff's office. Okay.
No, actually, we're not, we're, we're, our recommendation is you stay exactly where you were this year at 94.
But I mean, within the two years, there's an increase, we added the five people, even though 12 went out, there's, there was an, there was an increase. 12 went out, 5 came in, so it was a net reduction of seven, but then we contracted for the 12 over at the school, so, so there's still an increase of five people in the sheriff's department.
I wouldn't say there was increase in sheriff's office because you contracted with an outside agency, they're, they're not, they're not deputies, that was with, that was with the school system, we contracted.
Well, we contracted for those same services that the 12 were providing.
You, you did.
With another company, and then we added five employees to the sheriff's department.
That's right.
So that's a net increase, the way I do accounting, that's an increase.
Okay.
Any other?
That contract is not with us, it's with the school system. That's correct, it's with the school system, and it's a three-year contract, and it's actually more expensive than internal. So then you'll see, starting on page 15, is the salary plan, the '22, '23 salary plan, that gets presented each year, gives you the grade, the hiring ranges, the position, whether they are FLSA, yes or no, means they're subject to FLSA, or if they're not, whether is they considered a safety-sensitive position. If it is considered a safety-sensitive position, then they are in the random drug test, if they're not considered a safety-sensitive position, you're not allowed to random them, and it shows the department they're under. Now, this is the latest, as you'll see, this includes the special hiring rate for the deputy sheriffs that was approved by the board at the, at the 4-6 meeting. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Any, any additional questions?
Okay, so I am going to pick up, yeah, I'm not sure exactly where this one was in the book, where did that one come out of the book, as long as I'm...
25.
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, it is, I turned it upside down. Page 25, it's the legal sheet that we folded over and put in sideways for you, that's the summary of the general fund expenditures. I'm going to work from that page, and then if there are questions, we can dive down individually to each of the departments. You'll see that starts on page 31 with the board of commissioners, that budget. What we show in the summary is net changes, and we list out things that are typically above 5%, so that they're pretty clear. So if you, just for an example, under governing board, you'll see under the big spreadsheet that the recommended, we have the column that shows the fiscal year '22, '23, what we are recommending compared to the '21, '22 original. So what was originally approved in this current fiscal year, and then we show what we're recommending for next fiscal year, and that's the difference. So there's an increase of $19,000 in the board's budget, that's 5.3%, and the, one of the drivers of that is, is we added some additional funding, so if you go to page 32, you will see the actual line item budget of the governing board, and you can see in the one column, it shows original budget, and then you see the recommended, so you can see that, you know, over the year, over the, the '22 original budget, like in salaries, it was 121,854, it's up 130 to 130, 129, that's the change in, in, in the healthcare piece that the board voted on 18 years ago, and, and some changes there, so, but you can see exactly any changes. The big driver for that is we added, under professional services legal, we added $6,000, it was originally $84,000, we bumped it to $90,000. The reason we added that $6,000 in there is, the 84 is simply the retainer right now for the county attorney, and we occasionally will have some outside work that needs to be done, and that $6,000 would allow some of that work to be done, that the county attorney needs some outside work done without us having to, you know, we do it every year, so we might as well budget for it. So that's the big driver there, that's why you'll see on the notes side in the big sheet, where we stuck it out there, that shows increase in professional services. So any questions about the governing board's line item budget?
Here or none?
Okay, so the next one we move to is county administration, that is up $12,740 or 2.6%, and we don't, there's not really a main driver in there, happy to answer any questions about it, I think, as I looked through on, on this one, it's mostly related to salaries and retirement, because we did have a bump in retirement this year again, and I think everything is generally about the same or, or down in a couple of places. But I'm happy to answer any questions, as you look at page 34 on the specific line item of county administration. Okay, so the next one down is finance, that starts on page 35, the line item budget is on page 36, finance is up $28,000 or 4.2%, just looking generally there, since it's not over 5%, there's not a, a big driver of it, again, we had increases in retirement from the state and, and health insurance, so that's a driver for all of the budgets in general, in the audit, right, there's, the audit went up, so there's an increase in the audit fee, and that's generally the only significant increase besides the overall increases, like I say, for all departments based on health insurance and retirement. So any, do you have to answer any questions? And like I say, we have the, we have the department heads here, so if there's something you want to dive down into in the finance budget, Anita can answer those, and then as we move on to human resources, their budget.
I think your door's back there still locked.
Uh, actually, it should be open, I unlocked it. It's a, the handle's a little sticky, but, but, but I actually opened it. So any questions on the finance line item budget?
Good.
Okay, so human services starts at page 37, the line item budget begins on page 38, and in finance, you'll see that's up, I mean, in, in human resources, you'll see that's up by 7,000 at 2.9%, and again, this is a three-person department, so the numbers are up simply because of health insurance, retirement, and then there's, you'd like a head question, Mr. Reynolds?
Did you, did we put the 5% COLA in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That, that's listed as a service expansion. So are there any, any specific questions you may have about that? There really aren't anything that, that's a big driver of that, and we increased from the original budget 1,500 to 5,000 on professional development because we're trying to get some additional training done, and help with some certifications on some things, so in general, nothing, no major driver, but when you have a small department, the health insurance and the retirement pieces, when they go up from the state, cause those budgets to go up. But again, it's only a full point, it's a full point, no, it's a 2.9% increase.
Keep going.
Good, okay. The tax assessor is actually down 0.8%, so essentially flat, that budget starts on page 39, the line item budget is on page 40. So you'll see the original budget was 1.2, the recommended is 1.19. If there's any questions, Lloyd is here to answer those, but that budget is, is just down $10,000. Okay, tax collector starts on page 41, line item budget is on page 42, you'll see that that budget overall is, is up $9,700 or 1.5%. And again, not only, so when you think about that, with some of these departments who have lots of personnel in them, there, there have been some cuts in this budget, obviously, because the health insurance went up, the retirement went up, and we anticipated some inflationary issues as well with some of the things they were doing. So in general, the budget, when it's that low, that small of an increase, 1.5%, there were actually some significant cuts that went into it. Ready to move on to court facilities?
Yes, sir.
So court facilities is a, is a little different animal, it is up 48,000 or 17.9%, and that's driven by the security contract. If you look at page 44, that is the line item budget for court facilities, included in that is the jury commission, we pay money for the jury commission so that they can do that. Courthouse operations is the funds that were set aside by the board at $12,500, that's a, that's a line item that the clerk of court can use for things that need to be done in, in the courthouse that they, that they need. We've done that every year for several years now. You'll see the utilities is up, goes from 105 to 123, obviously, we've seen some increases in those across the, across the county. There's a little bit additional in for repairs and maintenance from $5,750, that too is driven by supply chain issues, and every time we do something in maintenance, the costs are going up tremendously. The big driver on this is the contract services, you'll recall, we brought that to the board, we brought that back to the board for Allied Universal, the service that they're providing for courthouse security, and that contract went up from 145 to 172. So that is the main driver of that 17.9% increase, the utilities and the contract services. Good? Okay, so the elections is next, and elections is up 2.6% overall, their budget starts on page 45, and the line item budget is on page 46. Again, that's a small amount, it's $9,000, and is mostly driven by personnel with health insurance and retirement, it's gone up a little bit, so. And we can probably send, probably text Kelly, unless the board has a question, you can probably text Kelly and tell her she doesn't need to come. Okay.
We're good.
They had a 5:00 meeting, a board meeting, so. So registered deeds is next, the, they're up, that, that starts on page 47, her line item budget is on page 48, it's up 5.1% or $21,000, and that is related to some equipment purchases that come from the restricted automation funds, that's money that when fees are collected by the registered deeds, it goes, some, a portion of that money goes into a state restricted automation fund, and clerks of court, registers of deeds across the state use those funds for automation services, so, you know, to try to make, to try to automate and to do more electronic things in the office. So there's some, there's some expenditures that, that the registered deeds is proposing, and that is driven mostly by that increase in the restricted automated funds, so that's that 5.1%. If there are any questions, this Whitehurst is here, if you have any questions specifically for her about her budget.
Here or none?
Okay, so then we'll move on to maintenance, and this is up, and this is, you know, a pretty significant bump, it's $192,000 up, 14.2%. Talked a little bit about this in the budget message that I brought the other night, that budget starts on page 49, and the line item budget is on page 50. Obviously, there's, we're seeing a tremendous increase in maintenance costs, I know that in speaking with our maintenance crew, when they go to get prices, the prices are, we'll give it to you for the next week, and then you got to call us back because the prices are moving that fast. There's also some additional increases due to the age... There's also some additional increases due to the HVAC maintenance work that we have to do this year. You'll recall that under some of the CARES Act money that you used to put in some additional filtration and UV lights in the HVAC systems to try to take care of some, any contamination issues that may come from COVID or any other virus, bacteria, things that might be in the air, those have to be changed out. So there's some increased additional cost in that. So that's what's driving that, along with the utilities. Because in this budget, you'll also see all of the utilities for every building that, that we have. So if there are any questions, be glad to try to answer those as well.
The one penny that taxed that we did, is that, is that money in this budget here? It's not?
No.
It's separate?
It's in the budget, though.
It's in the budget, yes.
But it's not in this?
It's not in that department. It's a separate, it's, it's now separate. Any questions regarding maintenance, buildings and grounds?
Good.
Okay. So debt services next. Debt service you'll see on page 51, and then it runs through 52 and 53. That shows you all the debt that the county currently has. You see what the, what the, what the percentage of tax-supported debt to appraised property value is, 0.15%. The total general fund debt to capita, per capita, is $332. So your general fund debt is $332 for every person in Beaufort County, essentially what it equates to. And the majority of that general fund debt is school bond debt. I said that wrong. The GEO debt, the general fund GEO debt per capita is 207. So the total, make sure I clarify that because I said the school mostly. So overall, all of the debt, including the general fund debt and the non-general fund debt, is 332 per person. The general, the GEO debt, the general obligation debt, which is your school bonds, is about 207. And you'll see that those have come down through the refinancing. There are only two that are hanging out there now. You can look on page 52, and you'll see outstanding debt, the installment, the energy contract, the USDA purchase for the health building at the community college, the installment purchase for the building, 117 West Third Street, the installment for major capital that we did three or four years ago, where we transferred money, we took a loan against the healthcare fund that was the trailing liabilities, and the board took a loan against that. And you're paying that back. You'll see that that gets paid out. It'll be paid out in '28. We pay that back at about $370,000 a year, and you can see that in the debt service. And we also, at the time, we looked at what the interest rate was, so you're paying yourself back with interest, just like you were taking a loan from a bank. You took a loan from the, from the trailing liabilities healthcare fund, and you're paying, you're paying that back with interest. Then you have the, the two GEO bonds, and you'll see the total outstanding debt. So right now, as of 6:30, 22, the county has total outstanding debt of $14.8 million. And you see how it runs out on page 53. You'll see what year each one of those debt services were issued, when their final payday is, what the actual number is, and how much we budget each year for it, what the current interest rate is, and what the bond type is. Whether you have a GEO bond, which is where you pledge the full faith in capital, full faith in credit of the county, essentially your taxes, your, your ability to raise taxes, that's what your GEO is. And then you have some installment where we essentially pledge the capital that you bought. So instead of, instead of saying to the bank, "We're going to pledge the full faith and cap, credit of the county to raise taxes if we need to fund this," you're saying, "We bought this piece of equipment." And you're saying to the bank, "If we, if we default on that," which we never will, "But if we were to default on that, you can have the piece of equipment back." And, and, you know, it's kind of like a car loan, right? When you do a car loan, and they'll come take your car away from you. Well, that's what installment financing is for us. It's 168 financing, it's financing that the state no count allows you to do. And it works really well because it is expensive. It is extremely expensive to go out and do general obligation debt because you have to do all the rating agencies, so it costs money. As you can see, our interest rates, you know, we, we, our, our general obligation bonds are at 1.17%, 1.23%. You know, they're, they're way down there. So we've, we've done really well. We've been very fortunate, and not only fortunate, but we've been very strategic in how we've handled our debt and what we've done in refinancing that debt and saving the county money and decreasing the terms on those. So be glad to answer any questions about debt, but obviously, you'll see that's down $70,000, and that's the way the debt is. As we pay it off, it decreases, so it's ladder down. The next is non-departmental. Those are, these are expenditures that essentially relate to all departments across the entire county, so we label them as non-departmental and pull them out of this. So this is up about 6.9%, and that is due to an increase in property and liability. You all recall that there were some, we are in the Association of County Commissioners' risk liability pool. There have been some pretty significant hurricane impacts across eastern North Carolina and middle part of the state. The association has had some increases due to some of that, some of those impacts. So we saw an increase in our rates. We also saw an increase in our, in our deductible for a named storm. But we also were able to save some money by doing the workers' compensation fund. So, so overall, the, the non-departmental is up about $56,000, and the major driver on that is the property and liability insurance increase. Good? All right, so on page 57, transfers to other funds. These are, you'll see that is up, it's, it's 209%, but that is where we are transferring money out of the general fund, the fund balance, to put into the workers' compensation fund. You'll see on page 57 where it breaks those down. And just briefly to go through them, you have the reevaluation funds. We're putting $162,050 in the reevaluation fund. You're required by state law to do that, to look at what time period you're going to do revaluation and put, if it's an eight-year revale, you put 1/8 of what you think the cost of that revale is going to be. So you are required by law to set that money aside so you can pay for your revaluation. The economic development fund, that's $45,000. That is the funding that, remember when there was the city and county ownership of the airport, and everybody parted ways, and there was an agreement that that area inside the fence would be deannexed by the city? And in return for deannexing the area inside the fence by the city as an economic development incentive, so that if you owned an airplane, you'd only be charged one tax rate, you would be taxed by the city and the county, that you set a floor. There was an agreement where you set a floor, and they said, "Here's the value of the property as of that agreement." And the county gets that amount of money every year. Any growth in that goes to the city. It was essentially an opportunity for the city, since they're, since they took over the airport, the county got out of it, it was an incentive for them to try to grow the business out there, and they would be rewarded for growing the business. The county was held harmless at that value at the time. And that's where you've heard us talk about, that the city is interested in having a conversation with the county about adjusting that, because right now, once it gets to $100,000, then the agreement says you'll come back together and talk about it and to see how you might want to do something additional to help them. Because the goal was for the airport, based on the property tax value at the airport, essentially that plus fuel sales and hangar rentals and all the other things, so that it would be self-sustaining. And once we get to $100,000, the agreement essentially says, "That's where it stops, and you renegotiate." So this is where that money comes from. We call it the airport grant. So for that extra, that extra tax value that's out there that the city's helped bring, we cut them a check. We take the value, we look at what the, the revenue is off that on taxes, we take our portion out, that's the base value, and then we send the rest to the city. So that's what that is. The facilities improvement capital fund, that's the, that's the one penny that is, that is pulled aside every year, that since the board established that, to do capital improvements in the county. The capital reserve fund is the $30,000. You recall that in prior years, y'all made an agreement with the board of elections that you would set aside, and you see that, $55,000. You set aside $55,000 for a certain number of years, and then they had to replace the voting equipment. And then, and you didn't have to go look for money because you'd set aside money every five, for five years, and it was sitting right there. And, and they bought the election equipment. So the board of elections asked, they said, "We're eventually going to have to replace this equipment again, too. It doesn't last forever." So instead of setting aside $55,000, how about set aside $30,000? And keep doing that, and keep doing that, and keep doing that. And then when it gets to a certain amount, and we get to the point where we've got to replace the equipment, the money's there. We don't have to go find it somewhere else. So that's where that $30,000 is. Special revenue fund, the $1 million, that is the transfer for the $1 million for the Beaufort Promise. And then to the workers' compensation reserve fund, the 746, $600,000 from fund balance. And then the remainder of that is interest that we anticipate earning on that and the savings that come out of the, the deductible that we have. So that's where the 746. You know, we, we talk about the 600 coming out, and you're like, "Wait a minute, you said 600, but that's showing 746." That's the 600 plus the savings plus some interest that we anticipate earning on that. And that will be set aside in that special revenue fund to draw against based on our, our $100,000 deductible for workers' compensation. Any questions on transfers to other funds? I know that one always stands out when we look at it, and it says there's a 200% increase from prior year.
So we're transferring the whole million to their foundation?
We are. Well, we're, we're not transferring to the foundation. We're transferring it to, internally to a special revenue fund. And the way it's set up is we're showing that as a four-year funding cycle. So essentially, unless the board changes that, what we've set up is to say, 250 each year for four years makes the million. And what will happen is the community college will do their thing, they'll send it over to us and say, "We've had this many people qualify for the Beaufort Promise, up to $250,000, and we would reimburse the account, the, the community college for that."
Is there any interest income forecast by that?
I don't think there is, but there would be just a little bit. I mean, it all depends upon what the numbers look like. We've not shown that in the, in this million.
Good?
All right, contingency, and we'll flip over to page 59. So 59 is, is contingency. As you remember, we typically set aside a half, $100,000 in contingency each year. Last year, we had it in the budget. The board pulled it out to do something different. That, that too is why you see, well, that shows 0%, but it wasn't there last year because you used it for something else. But we always like to have $100,000 in contingency. Remember that contingency is not something that we have the ability to spend because it's in a contingency line item. General statutes say that it has to come back to the board. So we can't spend contingency money without asking the board's permission or we're violating state law. All right. Additional questions?
We're good?
We're skipping social services. As I talked to you about social services, they are, they will be here next week. So we'll move to health department. And Jim is here to dive down into that if you have any questions. What you'll see in the health department is they are up 13.6%, and that is due to an increase in state grant funds to fund the MAT and substance abuse and communicable diseases grants. That's medically assisted treatment, the opioid medically assisted treatment called MAT. So there's some money coming down from the state. They're all state funds. We have to show them coming in, but that is the significant driver of why that is up. In the budget message, we talked about that, and actually, you know, what the board is typically has always asks is, "What is the, what is the state dollar compared to the county dollar?" Because the state's funding programs at the health department, and then there's local money from the county that goes into the health department. And that number went from 45% last year to 39% this year. So the county dollar has gone down, and the state dollar has gone up in funding. And that's where the, that's what we always get asked typically about, where is, where is that? It's generally 45, Jim, where we usually stay, 45, but because of these additional funds from the state, it's gone down a little bit. But typically, we're 45 county, 55 state in, in Jim's budget. So happy to answer any questions, or point to Jim for any of those answers.
Is the county dollars actually gone down, or is it just the state dollars have gone up, and the county dollars have stayed flat?
It's probably more that the state dollars have gone up.
Okay. So we're still paying what we pay in the past as a county, dollar-wise, in the budget?
Dollar-wise, probably so, yes.
It's down $15,000 from last year of the budget, and $9,000. It was down last year.
About the same.
Yeah, $15,000 on that budget, it's about flat.
Yes, flat.
Okay. Veteran services, so you got a couple, we got a foot on there, the veteran services. They have a lot of programs in the health department. The veteran services is on page 91. That is a one-person shop. The line item budget is on page 92. And again, that's up 5.5%, it's $3,000, a little over $3,000. And that is just operational cost increases, retirement, health insurance, and just a couple of things. But because that is such a small department, that shows a, you know, it shows a big impact on a very small budget. So that's, that's why you see the 5.5% increase. But I think if you, I know, I know the board gets the report every month from the veteran services officer, and I know that in listening to the community, they're very pleased with the efforts they're going on in, in the veterans' office. You see the numbers that are now being brought in for benefits that veterans are due from the federal government, that our veteran services officer is helping to make sure that they receive. So it, it brings dollars into the county and helps people who have, who have served their country and are, and are due those benefits and may not have gotten them. And Jenny helps them find out what they qualify for and make sure they get qualified, and helps them with, with all the paperwork, all the way from that to funeral benefits and things like that. So really important service that is provided by the county to veterans. And, and, and also on the other side, like I say, brings money into the county for those veterans to add some churn in the community. So any questions there? Okay. Area mental health and transportation, that budget is on page 93. The line item is on page 94. That is the transportation that you'll recall many, many years ago, when the state said counties have got to provide a public transportation system. Some counties got into the transportation business. Like if you're ever in Pitt, you have Pats, the Pitt Area Transit Service. Here, the board said, "We don't want to be in that business." So you, you worked with Beaufort Area Transit, the Pats, and through the, through the Beaufort Developmental Center, and they run that essentially. So there's Pats are money that comes in from the state for transportation that goes to them. It is, it is flat this year. So you'll see on that, that includes the $193,750 to the transportation. You also have a funding of $55,000, which has been relatively flat over the years, to the, to the developmental center. There is some money that comes through from elderly and handicapped transit. There's the NC DOT grant that comes for transportation. There's a piece in there for passages that is substance abuse and mental health that is a contract that passages is doing, that flows through the county. It's a state grant. The state reimburses on that. Alcohol treatment, $20,000, and the Trillium Health Grant, that's based, the 157, that's based on your ABCs, your ABC revenues. And if there are any questions regarding Trillium, Vice Chairman Langley would be glad to answer every one of those. And if there are any questions regarding Trillium, Vice Chairman Langley would be glad to answer every one of those.
I have a question, but how are you doing with anticipating the skyrocketing cost of like fuel? I mean, with all of these finishes that involve fuel?
For us, we, we've anticipated and we've pegged, we've looked at what the projections are for fuel and now is it what, four, five, so?
Actually, I think it was 375. We probably got it a little low.
But, but what we did was we looked at that number and projected it across what our normal consumption rates were for the year and bumped it up a little bit. So you'll see those when we get into the departments that have lots of vehicles on the road, whether it be EMS or sheriff's office. You'll see the fuel line item go up significantly.
I heard they were, they were reprogramming some of the gas pumps for $10 a gallon.
Wow.
In California.
So we'll move on to the next group of is community services and that starts on page 95 with cooperative extension. You'll see the line item budget for cooperative extension on page 97. That is, that is an agreement that both county has with NC State and A&amp;T to provide those services in the canisters, a cost share piece. It's just what they do is send in, so we, we send money into, to those entities, to NC State for that service. They do have some line items that they, that they work off of. You'll see that top, the UNC personnel contract, that's the big piece of it. This budget is also up, it's a little over $60,000, a 21%. And that's specifically to replace a tractor. And I think Rod actually gave you a, a handout on that. They've had a tractor for 15 years that is in, getting in bad shape. So when Rod brought it to us, we looked at it and it's a, we budgeted in there, you'll see at the bottom, it's $64,000. For us, you know, they, I don't know how long they had a tractor, 15, 20 years, but we would view that, from, from our perspective, we review that, we, we would view that just as a replacement of any other vehicle. Like if we were replacing a pickup truck for a department that's doing work. So we've shown that as a vehicle purchase replacement for $64,000. So that's the main driver in that. And we anticipate that we won't have to do that again for another 20 years, right? 15, 20 years?
It's actually 93, almost 30 years old.
Almost 30 years old. So, so Rod's here, can answer any questions you have about that, but that's the main driver in why that's up.
Well, I have some questions about it. What, what do we use the tractor for?
The tractor purchased in 93 for test plot implementation. So there's a history, a history here in the county with extension to implement hybrid, corn hybrids, soybean variety trials, looking at different, different types of hybrids and how they react to our growing conditions. Farmers like to come and look at those. You make a poor decision on a hybrid or a variety and it can cost a lot of money, especially in today's world that farmers are operating in. So we do a lot of test plots, a lot of demonstration things. We show different practices, different things of that nature. So that's what tractors used for primarily.
Do, when we do test plots, these are for the seed companies, right?
So we have a fairly sizable footprint in that area, yes, doing, but we don't, I mean, the companies give us money. I charge them an entry fee for each one they enter and we plant them. The idea is that we're providing a unbiased platform for them to look at these. It's, it's not the companies putting their varieties out. This is an independent group at NC State University, in our case, putting these varieties out so that they can look at them and be evaluated for different traits and different, and for their yield as well.
Do we do plantings in other counties?
The, when we have the Blackland Farm Managers Tour, that tractor, this planter, this equipment, often we'll go over to other counties to help plant those plots because that's a regional field day that we implement. So I will go to Terrell County, well, well, Terrell County, Washington and Hyde County occasionally. It, that's a once every, that, that event happens in one county every year. So, you know, it's not like we're going to all three every year. It's just my, my good, I went to Washington County last year, a couple of years ago, we were in Hyde County. This year, we're in Beaufort County with it. And then I have, also have other things that I do in, with my own program right here in the county as well. So it's always operating here.
How, do other counties do this?
Yes, to varying degrees. We are probably the most progressive county in the state when it comes to doing this. Again, there was a history here with my predecessors, they kinda got the ball rolling, and I picked that up and just maintained it. But we're blessed to get good support. That planner, that you've got a picture of there is actually a donated unit, probably a 40, $45,000, maybe $50,000 donation of equipment. That quality equipment gave us a few years ago, which gives us a modern planner that we can do this work with. Sad thing is, the offset is it, it takes a better, more advanced tractor to pick it up and to operate it. And that's part of the reason I put a little explanation in there about.
What would seed companies do if, if, if governments didn't do their test plots?
So they, these companies all have their own testing programs, they do. You can ride around the county and you'll see, I hate to name names, but a pioneer seed rep will have his varieties somewhere on the side of the road. You'll see the signs and you might see other companies doing the same thing. Like I said, the benefit and the advantage that we have in doing this and that growers like is that, as, as everything that we do in, in the extension with the university, where our charge is to be unbiased and research-based. So we're not trying to sell them a specific hybrid. In fact, if you, well, we're, we're giving them the opportunity to look at all of these hybrids from these different companies. We harvest the data, harvest the plots, get the data, put it into a package format so that they can look at it and see, okay, in an independent, unbiased situation, which is best? Not, not driven by the company. A lot of times, the company trials will have their hybrids or varieties and then maybe one of the competitors in there just to show, you know, the differences. But we, we put them on.
When did we start planting for companies?
Well, we've been, we've been doing this kind of work for better 30 years. I would, I tell you, that tractor, the Ford tractor was purchased in 93 to do this very thing with wheat and soybeans and corn. So since 93 at least.
That was when Mr. Dilday was on the board?
Mr. Dilday, yeah, I think Lee Drew, Mr. Lee Drew was on there as well. Gayla Ambrose, Henry Riddick was my predecessor.
He owned a seed company, didn't he? I, I moved, I moved back 38 years ago and we were doing it 38.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Mr. Dilday owned a company where he would contract with growers to grow wheat and soybeans. Then he would bring it in, process it, condition it, re-bag it, treat it if it needed, and then resell it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Does that 93 tractor have a salvage value?
Everything is, is, right now, all prices are pretty high. I would guess that that blue tractor there would be worth five, six, $7,000. It's a low hour tractor, actually. It doesn't have that many hours on it. It's just old and outdated and, but we'll, you know, if we put it on the Gov Deal site, it would bring, I would imagine, five, six, $7,000 pretty regular.
The bigger tractor, you have a place to keep this tractor in and will the bigger tractor fit?
I, I have, I've, I've got this equipment all over the place, to be honest with you. A lot of farmers will give me a spot to put it. Actually, Circle Grove Seeds down in Dale Haven, which is Mr. Dilday's former place, operated by somebody else now. But they give us a spot in their seed warehouse to store a lot of this equipment in. We have storage units that, that we rent to keep things in. Sometimes it's just a farmer's shelter and it, you know, put it over here, it'll be out of, out of the way and safe and out of the weather. So we try to keep everything protected as much as we can, but if that's an answer.
Jared? You did say that you had a revenue stream attached to that, that they actually paid you to do?
Yes. So, so as we, when we did, now that's specific to the variety and hybrid trials. Now, there are other things that we do also. But yes, with the hybrid variety trials that we test, we will charge each company an entry fee per variety or hybrid. And then that money goes into keeping upkeep on the plots, you know, maintaining them, fertilizing them, doing all the things that you have to do to, to implement those kind of trials. And, and for equipment repair.
How many of those do you do per year?
This year, this year, I scaled it down just a little. And I think on the corn side, we've got 40, 40, yeah, 40 hybrids. On the soybean side, it's probably, I have had as many as 80, but this year, probably closer to 55 or so.
Any other question? Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian?
So moving on to soil and water conservation, you'll see that's a 3.8% increase. No large driver of that except that, of course, health insurance, retirement, some small operational increases. That budget starts on page 99, which gives the introduction and explanation about it. And then their line item budget is on page 102. Ms. Anne is here tonight if you have any specific questions about that. But like I say, in general, it's, it's fairly flat. It's just accounting for health insurance increases and retirement increases.
Any question? Okay.
So on page 103 is youth services. And the line item budget on that is on page 104. You have the explanations on page 103. It's made up of the JCPC program. You're very familiar with the JCPC program. Those are funds that come through the state that the county matches up 10% against, but you see the entire amount. So you'll see JCPC at 204, 187. That's the entire amount. You're only matching up against it by 10, by 10% of it. We have to show the entire amount. So there is a revenue stream that comes in from the state that offsets that. It's actually down, you know, $1,267 from last year because there was a slight decrease from the state. The rest of the programs, Tamika Pals, Boys and Girls Club are funded at the same levels. So you'll see it's just, it's a slight decrease of 0.5% or that $1,267, which is associated with JCPC. Happy to answer any questions relating to that.
Here or done?
So outside agencies, and as you recall, the way we do outside agencies, that is a flat budget. Any changes in outside agencies will come to you as a service expansion. And there are a handful of outside agencies who are either requesting additional funding or who are looking to be new funders. And you will see those in the service expansion. But this essentially is a flat budget from last year that funds the outside agencies that you funded last year at the same level you funded them last year. Happy to answer any questions on those, but it's flat. And any changes that are, that are being asked for, you'll have, the, the outside agency that's requesting that change will come and present to you next Thursday, next Thursday, and lay that out for you and ask you for that increase and you can make a decision on whether you wanna fund it or not.
In the expansion?
In the expansion, yes, sir. They will come in behind county departments. So any questions on that one?
Here or done?
So the next budget is the economic development budget. That starts on page 107. The line item budget is on page 108. That budget is slightly increased at 1.1%. There are a couple of service expansions that you'll see later, next Thursday on that. I'm not sure exactly where we're gonna be with those. What Brad and I have talked about is what I want him to do is spend some time evaluating the program, looking at those things before we bring to you any changes. That he needs some time to look at it. Martin obviously had some thoughts about what he wanted to do. Not discounting those, but I want Brad to look at them and make his decision about where he wants to go with it and how things wanna go. So what I would say to you is we'll probably lay those service expansions out for you. We're not necessarily, don't anticipate you doing anything with them, but would ask you to give us a little, a grace over the next year as he evaluates that program. And we may come back to you with something that he says, you know, we really need to do this, you know, based on my experience, those kind of things. But in general, like I said, this budget is only up $3,500 or 1.1%. And again, it's two people, it's driven by health insurance increases, retirement increases, and, and just small operational increases. Any questions on that one?
Good.
So on page 109, this is planning and inspections and Commissioner Rich and we'll make that, we'll have that, we'll make that planning slash inspections so it's more clear. The big driver on this one, oh, actually, there will be another driver I gotta bring to you. The biggest driver right now, the 12.8% increase is for a vehicle replacement. The chief of inspectors' vehicle is 10 years old. 13 years old. And so it needs to be replaced. He puts a lot of miles on that vehicle in, in running around the county during inspections. There is a request, I got a request, actually it was yesterday, from the council of governments, the Mid East Commission. They do our planning contract for us. As you recall, we used to have an, an inside planner. The, essentially, years ago, the COG did the planning for you. Then the board moved under our prior administration to have an in-house planner. We did away with that several years ago, went back to the COG. They do our planning services for us for, for a contract of $60,000 a year, not to exceed $60,000 a year. Met with them yesterday, they asked me to come over and speak to, speak with them. They, they're running into some additional increases as well as everybody and asked, would we consider increasing that contract? You know, my response on that was, well, there's a point at which we get back to where we're gonna hire somebody because it's cheaper for us to do that than, than to do that. So a 10% increase for that, so $6,000 on top of that at 66 is probably where we feel comfortable asking the board to do that. We did not have that in here, we still are showing that 60,000. So what we would do is add 6,000 to this, to that contract to bump that up, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yes.
So you're talking about adding a planner?
No, no, no. What I'm saying is we currently have a contract with the Mid East Council where they do our planning services for us. They handle all our planning. It's a contract, it's a $60,000 not to exceed contract. They called me yesterday and said, we need to talk to you. We're running into some challenges with, with being able to, to do all that work for $60,000. Would, would like to have an increase. My response to them was, we can talk about that, but remember, if we start getting too much beyond 60,000, then we start getting back to the point where it's cheaper for us to hire somebody on our own and have them in-house. So we, what we're suggesting is, is about a 10% increase on that contract to about 66,000. It's a not to exceed, so if we go to 66, they bill us on an hourly rate for what they do. So if they don't, if they don't hit it, then we don't spend it. But if they hit 66, it's a not to exceed.
But I'm not finished. But the, the thing about it is this, this is just a part-time thing with the COG. But if we had our own planner, 66,000 a year, he'd be a full-time employee. Am I correct?
Uh, not at 66,000.
Okay, you wouldn't?
We're, we're not quite there yet. And that was what I said to them. I said, yeah, because there's, you know, the conversation was maybe 10 or 15. And I said, once we start adding 10 or 15 to 60, we get close at covering the entire cost of salary and benefits of our own planter.
How many hours is that, that they do? How many, well, you don't have the data handy. How many hours do they work for us a year?
You know, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I can look and see, but, but again, it's a not to exceed figure, so they will.
I understand that.
Yes, they will.
I was just trying to see, was it feasible to add another 10% to have a full-time person or continue to go not to exceed?
Our, our recommendation to you would be to continue to go with a not to exceed, bump this to 66 to give them a little breathing room. We'll reevaluate it. We're not at, when you talk about a planner and the salary and then add in the benefits and it's about 35% for benefits. You know, we, once we start hitting 75, 80, then, then we can probably hire a, a professional planner and pay them salary and benefits and break even. But until we get to that point, it's cheaper for us to use the COG.
All right, John. John has a question.
Can, can you have them, when you come back with this, can you bring with you the items that they have done for us over the last 12 months and the amount of, that they billed us for?
I can, we can pull that. I mean, so they handle all of the planning, they handle the planning board, all of the subdivision, all the splits, all the stuff like that. So, but yes, they, they bill us. but yes, they, they bill us so we can pull those for you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm at the end of where we said we would get to tonight. And our plan was to pick up the next night, Tuesday night, with, starting out with education, having, there is a, there's actually an early college graduation, I think, that night that the superintendent needs to be at. So he's going to be here at 5:00, and we'll start immediately at 5:00 with the school system for any questions that are there. Then he's going to take off and go to the graduation. Dr. Luke will be right behind him. We'll pick up DSS and then we'll go through public safety. And that'll wrap up the departments. And then we get into enterprise funds. So we'll do water sewer and solid waste. And then the next Thursday night, a week from tonight, we'll be doing enterprise, we'll be doing service expansions where you'll hear from internal departments about any changes or new things they'd like to do in outside agencies. So we're here to answer any questions that you have about any of this that we've gone through to date, revenue side, expenditure side, like I say, up to education, anything the board has questions about, anything you want us to bring back to you that you've looked at, what you have in your book. Commissioner Richardson, I asked about some breakouts of, of all the positions and what the, you know, how much was a county, how much was a state, and those kind of things. That's in your book. So if there's anything else or any questions you have, you know, at your disposal.
On the school system, Anita, I requested the fund balance for the last three years. Have you seen that yet?
I thought I forwarded it to you yesterday.
Well, I'm having problems and I've got to reset.
Okay.
I've got to, I think Brian told me to delete and add back.
Well, I can print it out for you real quickly.
No, that, that's fine. I'll let you do it after the meeting.
Okay.
Any, any other requests from the board?
Well, I won't, I won't be here the 24th because I'll be at that graduation as well.
All right.
I'll touch it on the screen.
If you have any questions in advance, why don't you send them to Brian or Anita? Okay. We will recess until next Tuesday night, Tuesday night. Thank you.